Can come get a loan and borrow to go to college.
Hmm.
So, private banks actually made the loans. But these are really risky loans. A lot of them aren't going to get paid back. So, the role the government played was it said to the private lenders, okay, if this loan goes bad, if it sours and the borrower doesn't pay, we will step in and pay you.
Because there's a public interest in sending more and more Americans to college?
Yes, this was very much perceived as something that was good for the United States. Part of it came out of a direct counter to the Soviet Union, the concern that we would fall behind, that there would be an education gap. So, the idea was that this was something that was in the taxpayers' interests to make sure that more people could pursue higher education.
Mm-hmm. So, how did that go, the government being the backstop?
Rocky. The program went through a lot of changes over the years. The banks were making money doing this, and the government was taking on the administrative burden of running the programs and of backstopping them. So, they would take on the losses when the loan soured. The moment when everything changed was in 2010. So, President Obama wanted to pass the Affordable Care Act, this very massive and expensive change in the healthcare system, and the government went looking for what it calls pay-for's. It went looking for ways to-
Revenue generators.
Exactly. Things that they could put into the budget and say, look, we're now making money, so this is going to balance out. And this was the area they zeroed in on.
Student loans?
Mm-hmm.
Even though they don't make any money from it?
Well, that was the calculation. The Congressional Budget Office and other financial analysts came back and said, if you take this in-house, if you start making these loans directly and keeping the profits from them, that's going to generate tens of billions of dollars over the next decade for the government.
Wow.
And for the first few years, that is how it starts to play out. And then that starts to change for kind of two reasons. The first is that the amount of money people owe starts to really surge, and that both makes it significantly harder for them to pay it off. You start to see more defaults and more people struggling with this debt. And it also starts incentivizing the government to look at ways to make it more affordable. So, you start to see them introduce more loan forgiveness programs, more repayment options that are more generous and more flexible, things where it means that the government starts to be subsidizing this program-
And making less money from-
Exactly. The math on this starts to change, and this moves from being an income center to the government, to an area of projected losses.
Was there a conversation in this period about whether the government's approach to this is making college more expensive?
Oh, yes.
Because that seems like a clear link. If the government is the provider of these loans, and it's going to forgive lots of the loans as they get bigger and bigger, what incentive do colleges and universities have to put a cap on the price of going to college?
Absolutely. That's been a running conversation for at least 20-plus years, even before the government pulled this all in-house. There was concerns from economists and policy analysts that this was driving the cost of tuition going up. Again, there's no other loans that really work like this. If you're borrowing for your undergraduate degree, you can borrow tens of thousands of dollars. And if you're borrowing for a graduate degree, you can borrow basically an unlimited amount of money. There's no test of are you likely to be able to make enough to pay this? So, that's how you get to a place where when you basically hand students, and really hand the schools, a blank check, suddenly the price goes up a lot.
Right. Well, for the sake of argument, what would it look like for the federal government to get out of the student loan business and to return to the pre-Obama era, where it's really the private sector in charge of this? And would that likely create a more predictable, less confusing whip-sawing system? And, just to make this question even more complicated, might that lower the cost of tuition?
I think the answer to all of that is it's unclear. As for tuition, I think people think the biggest issue there would be capping the amount that people can borrow. Right now, a lot of what's driven tuition is that nobody is sort of forcing a price constraint here.
Mm-hmm. Is it fair to ask whether what Trump is doing here by forcing the system to go back to its original state five years ago is that he is forcing us to reckon with all the things we're talking about here and to perhaps rethink the government's role? And is that a healthy exercise because of the confusion, because of the tuition costs that are unconstrained by the current system? I mean, how many times in this conversation have you basically said this system is broken?
Certainly part of why we've had this conversation so many times is that for much of the last decade, across multiple presidential administrations, Democratic and Republican, this has been, for a very long time, a really broken system.
And unless Trump does try to take it out of the government's hands or do something pretty radical, he will simply extend the brokenness-
Yes.
-without any upside.
Yes, and that's what we just don't know. I mean, really, there's a lot of options here, but the administration has not laid out any clear policy plans whatsoever here. So, are we just going to do what we've been doing for a long time now of limping along with this broken system and leaving borrowers to kind of fend for themselves in dealing with it?
And if that is the case, if the system limps and borrowers are left to pay these huge bills, what does the world look like in six to nine months, a year, a year and a half, if we start to see those millions of defaults?
It's obviously really catastrophic for individual people and their households. The effects of delinquencies and defaults really stick with you. For delinquencies, it's going to mess up your credit score, it's going to make it really hard for you to get loans and financing, it's going to make it much more expensive for you to do that. That often stops people from being able to afford the things they need for their daily lives, from housing to a car to things like that. And if people are having to really constrain their household spending, you're not going-
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 7:00 PM session of the Roanoke City Council on April 21st. We are glad that you are here tonight. I will invite our clerk, Ms. McCoy, to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Mr. Nash?
Here.
Mr. Volleson?
Here.
Ms. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
And Mayor Cobb?
Here. Anna Quorum is present. Vice Mayor McGuire is not feeling well tonight, so he will not be with us. We are going to receive our invocation tonight from Bishop Hardy. Is he with us tonight?
Yes.
Or I may be offering the invocation.
There's somebody eager there to give the invocation, or Mr. Roman?
All right, I will offer the invocation, and is he here?
Is none of them, they're out right now.
Are they out?
Yeah, Mr. Roman is available with me.
Of course he is. All right, I will project, and do they know back there that they're not working?
Yes, I'm going to.
Okay. Thank you for letting me know that. I will project. So, we're going to begin tonight with a moment of silence honoring the memory of Pope Francis. So, we'll begin with that, and then I'll ask our deputy city manager, Sam Roman, to offer our invocation, and then I will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Okay? So, let's please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Let us bow our heads to our gracious and eternal God. We thank you tonight for allowing us to come together in this chamber to do the best that we can for this city. Father, we ask that you would be in the midst of us as we all endeavor to do what's best for this great time, this great eight-time All-America City. Father, we ask that cooler heads will always prevail. We thank you for the difference of opinions, but we also thank you for the collaborative spirit that we know reside here today. God, I would ask that you would cover and watch over all of our elected officials as they make decisions that are detriment to our community. We thank you for all of the community members that have shown up tonight to share their thoughts, and we are grateful for everything. And in my custom, we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Reverend Roman. Please, hon. I'm going to invite Councilmember Nash to read a motion to certify our closed meeting.
I move, I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certify to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, and considered by the member of council in attendance.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Sanchez Jones? Okay. Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
You're okay?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
And the motion passes. Thank you. I'm going to go down to the podium, and I'd like to invite up Coach Wilson and the William Fleming High School girls' basketball team, if they would please come and join us at the front. If y'all would like to come and just stand right up here, Coach, you can come here. The picture of success. So, we wanted to take a moment to recognize you all and honor you for your extraordinary year. I know there are a lot of folks on the team that have achieved a number of things, but we'll start with you, Coach, because you were recognized as the Blue Ridge District Coach of the Year. Congratulations. Some of the team accomplishments include three-time Blue Ridge District Champion, runner-up at the Cherokee Invitational Classic in Cherokee, North Carolina, 5C Regional Championship runner-up, 5C State Champion runner-up, district record 10-0, record 25-4. That's extraordinary. Would you like to share some of these player accomplishments?
Yes.
And if you want to introduce the players as well, that would be great.
We can do that. Before I get into that, first, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the city council, thank you to our school board, administration at William Fleming High School, my athletic director. A lot of people really had their finger pinched on this season and whatnot, and I just want to say thank you all for y'all's support throughout the course of this journey. These are my babies right here, I'm going to be honest with you. Which I just, I'm just going to be honest, we've been together, this journey started back in June, and so we put in a lot of time, we cried together, we laughed together, so I'm truly, truly humbled and honored to be with this group. We'll start off first with Mari Warsome. She's a junior, she's two-time Blue Ridge District Player of the Year, 5C Player of the Year, and it was just voted last week. She was first-team All-State, and then also All-Tomsland Player of the Year, Mari Warsome. One thing I will add, she is a junior, so she has one more year, but she was able to score 1,000 points in four years. Next up, we have Signet Houston. Signet, she's the one, I'm going to be honest with you, number zero. She's, she made first-team All-Blue Ridge District, first-team, first-team All-Region 5C, and she also was a member of the 5C State Runner-Up Team. She also was honorable mention on All-Tomsland, so Signet Houston. We have Zakaya King, she's also a junior, she made first-team All-Blue Ridge District, second-team All-Region, All-Academic Region Team. I will say she has a strong 3.8 GPA, so that's the one thing I truly love about her, Zakaya King. Another junior we have, Cheyenne Tate, she was Blue Ridge District Honorable Mention, Blue Ridge All-District, and then she also was a member of the 5A, I mean, 5C State Runner-Up Team, Cheyenne Tate. We got Miss Krishanti Henderson, she is a ninth grader, raise your hand so they can see you, baby. She is a ninth grader. She accomplished a whole lot for us this year. She stepped in midway, midway throughout the season, and we honestly, we didn't skip a beat. She made second-team All-Blue Ridge District, third-team 5C All-Region, and she also was a member of, well, she, you know, a member of the 5C State Runner-Up, Shanti Henderson. Last but not least, we have De Asia Priest. She was one of our seniors. She's a four-year starter here at William Fleming High School. She had a phenomenal career for this season. She made first-team All-District, first-team All-District, she made honorable mention, Tomsland, All-District Team. She also scored 1,000 points this year as well for her season. And the beautiful thing about De Asia, she will be continuing her academics and athletic career. She just committed to Randolph College in Lynchburg to continue playing basketball. I'm not sure how much time I have, I have two more seniors I want to acknowledge. I have Kendall Barber, she's going to UVA to study law in the fall. Then we also have, then we have Lekenna Smith, who will be joining the Air Force here pretty soon, so. All right, so I'm going to acknowledge other players. We have Coach Larry Bishop. Then we have Jasmine Houston. We have Ms. Harper, Tiana Harper. We have Nadia Terry. I'm pausing for a second because I give everybody nicknames, so I just want to make sure, I want to make sure I give everybody their just due. Then we have Kylie Warsome. The beautiful thing about Kylie Warsome, she's just in the eighth grade, so please remember that face and that name, she will be making some records here at William Fleming High School. Then we have Coach Brian Ashford, then we have Coach Norumbi DeVeau-Hash, and this is the William Fleming Girls' Basketball Team. Yes, sir, we have, yes, sir, we have losing three, but we've got a lot coming back next year. Then we had a pretty strong JV season and whatnot, so honestly, I'm really looking forward to the offseason, we'll get going in June, so we're going to see what's what. We just ask, you know, this is what I will say while I got the mic. I will say thank you to the council, thank you to the school board, thank you to Dr. White and, you know, her administrative team. For the past few years, I've been able to, you know, expose these kids to a whole lot of different things. We travel all over the place, we go to, we go as far as DC, Tennessee, North Carolina, Hampton Roads, we do a whole lot because I want to expose them to different things and whatnot. And so, the funding that comes from, you know, all entities, it really, it really helps a lot. We fundraise a lot as well, but I just want to just let everybody know, you know, hey, we're taking full advantage of opportunities and everything that's presented to us, and we just want, once again, just say thank you, thank you, thank you a thousand times, and we will continue to represent Roanoke, Virginia in the best light that we possibly can. So, I just want to say thank you, and hey, let's go Cardinals. All right.
Any council members want to offer any words of encouragement?
I just want to say thank you to the coaches and ladies, great job, I am so proud of you. Thank you.
I'll just add, you know, as a former student athlete, I focus on the student because I wasn't a very good athlete. I understand how hard it can be to struggle, and Coach Ashford is like a brother to me, and so, me and him be talking all the time, like, man, what you doing this weekend? Oh, we got a basketball tournament. I'm like, dang, you're always somewhere. And so, I know how much work you all have put in, so you all have deserved all your flowers. And Coach Bishop was the conditioning coach at Nerf Side, so I know y'all, he probably got those ice baths. But I just want to give y'all y'all's flowers and say that your hard work paid off, and you have a whole city that supports everything you're doing, and we're all watching, and you all have made us very proud. So, thank you all.
I'll just add thank you to what, to the coaches and to you young ladies, you've made us very proud. Thank you so much. Keep up the good work.
So, we want to get a picture real quick with you all, for your team will make sure you all get a copy of it. And I want to just add my congratulations. We look forward to following your season, we're so proud of you. For those of us who want to be great basketball players, I wanted to be at one time, but, you know, that wasn't in the cards. But I love basketball, and I love that you all are experiencing this, not just for your natural talents and your academic achievements and your achievements on the court, but because you're a team and you look out for each other. And these are friendships you will have for the rest of your life, so cherish those and keep doing everything you can to be successful because you've got what it takes. So, congratulations.
Can you unbalance and come in a little bit? I'm not going to be to get all of you. Councilmember Powers, can you move just a little bit in? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to invite up and recognize the William Fleming High School Band.
Yes, there's about 60 of us.
Okay. So, just so you all know, this is representative of the band. There are 60 students, 60 students in the band, which is phenomenal. So, each year, thousands of students studying instrumental music in Virginia schools perform at District Concert Band Assessment facilitated by the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors' Association. Through prepared music and sight-reading skills, ensembles and their directors are assessed on a variety of categories, including tone quality, intonation, technique, rhythm, balance, musicianship, interpretation, use of preparatory time, and other factors. This March, the William Fleming High School Band, under the direction of Mr. Will Satterwhite, performed at the District Six Assessment in Blacksburg. After a fine performance on stage and in the sight-reading room, all four judges, unanimous, on the panel recognized Fleming with a superior rating. This is only the second time in school history that Fleming has achieved an overall superior and the first time for a unanimous top rating. Mr. Satterwhite, I'd love for you to come and share about your work and experience and introduce the students.
Thank you. So, District Concert Assessment is one of those things that we're working on throughout the year. It's a March event, but it comes down to the fundamentals that we're working on throughout our season and our year through all of the different activities that we do, whether that's concert band for this event, what we do with marching band or pep band, or the many other performances that we do around our school community and here in Roanoke. So, to be able to, in my first year with the program, new to the Roanoke City family, to be able to have a strong performance that was really attentive to detail, and I think a joyful performance. We get to do this thing together and to bring 60 young people together to do something that is creative and expressive at the same time is a really wonderful thing. I have the best job in the world in that regard. So, to work with these students at William Fleming and the other 57 that are here, that are in our program, and the faculty that we have, I'm very thankful to Roanoke City Council and to the school board, as well as our administration, faculty, and staff at William Fleming, for creating an environment where fine arts is not just supported with words, but with funding and with opportunities for our students. And to get to make music with them each day is a joy. So, here with us- So here with us tonight, we have, uh, Riley Hamilton, who plays flute in our ensemble, Kanaya Womack, who's an alto saxophone player, LaKenna, uh, Smith, who had a very busy spring with the basketball team as well on clarinet. And joining me tonight is my colleague, Robert Rigby, who teaches electronic music and guitar at Fleming and serves as our assistant band director for, um, our, our extracurricular offerings. Um, so thank you again for this opportunity to join the Roanoke City Family this year, and, and I'm really excited that this, um, event, Concert Assessment, is, um, the beginning of what I hope to be a long career of making really great music with the students here in the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So now, we're gonna move into the public hearings portion of our meeting, and we have five public hearings tonight. So I wanna thank you, first of all, for being here and being engaged with local government. I wanna thank you for respectfully listening to every speaker. Uh, we're gonna start out with every speaker having three minutes, okay? You don't have to take all of that time if you don't want to. Uh, and I also wanna thank you for being patient as we make transitions. We have a number of people downstairs in the E, what we call the EOC Room, Emergency Operations Room, and our, our city clerks team is working to make sure that, that people can come in and out. So what we will likely do, um, probably not after the first public hearing, but maybe after the second, we'll just take a brief recess. So if you, um, have signed up to speak for a particular public hearing, and, um, and you're done speaking, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but also if you'd like to make room for somebody that needs to come in for a later thing, uh, it's fine for you to leave. That would be very helpful for us. This, these meetings are live-streamed on Facebook, um, and later broadcast on RVTV. So thank you all so much for that. Our first public hearing tonight is a request of Boundless Capital LLC to rezone a property located at 2202 Roanoke Avenue Southwest, official tax map number 1421308, from IN, Institutional District, to MX, Mixed Use District, with a condition. Ben Crew is the agent and spokesperson. Ben, it's good to see you. Uh, we do have one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance to rezone certain property located at 2202 Roanoke Avenue Southwest, bearing official tax map number 1421308, from IN, Institutional District, to MX, Mixed Use District, with a condition proffered by the applicant, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It should be noted that City Planning Commission recommends approval, and Mr. Crew, I'll recognize you for any comments at this time, or if you just wanna receive any questions we may have.
Uh, good evening. Um, Ben Crew with Ballser and Associates, agent on behalf, um, of this request. Both the owners are here, Shelby and Richard, um, are here with me. Be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Any questions from council? Alright, I think we're good. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
I don't believe on this matter, no.
Okay. Alright, then I'll close the public hearing, and, uh, since there are no comments by council, I'll ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you all. And that will be the shortest public hearing for tonight. Our next public hearing, uh, is to receive the views of citizens regarding the appointment of two Roanoke City School Board Trustees for three-year terms of office, each commencing on July 1st, 2025. The candidates are Franny Apel, Adam Markwood, and Joyce Watkins. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and, uh, Madam Clerk, do we have citizens wishing to be heard on this public hearing?
Yes, I believe it's about nine or 10.
Okay. And if you'll call two at a time, and again, as your name is called, if you'll please come to the podium, you'll see on the podium a timer that goes from green to yellow to red, and you'll have three minutes, and when it turns yellow, that just basically means wrap it up. And if you're still going and wanna finish your remarks at the red, I will, I'll work with you on that, okay? Cause we're glad you're here tonight. Uh, alright, if you'll call the first two, so.
First two, Jessica Blandy and Shannon Schaefer.
Welcome, Ms. Blandy.
Hello, here on a different topic. Um, I wanted to thank you all first and foremost for allowing us to have such open discourse and encouraging such an active government conversation. Um, it is with great enthusiasm that I recommend the reappointment of Franny Apel, also known in my house as Bridgette Spahn, or in my classroom as Mrs. Franny, to the Roanoke City Schools, School Board. Franny embodies the heart of our school system, dedicated, compassionate, and deeply involved in the lives of students and families she serves. I have the privilege of working with Franny often. Yes, we see each other at Roanoke City Schools events, but we've also somehow managed to connect through Junior League of Roanoke Valley, Girl Scouts, and board members of a nonprofit preschool. I feel like I have a pretty good multifaceted knowledge of who Franny is and her contributions to Roanoke. Last week, she and I were frantically taking apart and reorganizing a meeting room for an event. Our seven-person committee had shrunk, shrunk to three for the night, and I was venting, and I men, mentioned to her how frustrated I was with teaching word problems to my class of second graders. I told her, the problem is clearly me. If everybody's not getting it, then I'm the problem, and I didn't know what to do next. Without skipping a beat, Franny said, hey, you know I taught math, I can come in the classroom and teach a lesson, i, i, if you'd want, no offense. Franny was part of Teach for America, teaching in inner-city Chicago with a concentration in math. That's who she is. If she can help, she will offer before you even think about asking. And nobody worry, and I know I have actual class parents downstairs, I gladly took her up on our offer, and she's coming this week. As a parent of two children in Roanoke City Schools, Franny brings a grounded firsthand perspective to the board. Her commitment extends far beyond the boardroom. She actively tutors students and regularly visits each one of her assigned schools, making sure the educators in the, the building know who their school board member is. In my classroom, sometimes we watch school board meetings, it's not boring, sometimes their parents are recognized, and my students will call out, it's Ms. Franny! They know we're from basketball, or Girl Scouts, or just her visiting the schools. The intentional connection she makes with students is truly what sets her apart. Our superintendent often says that in Roanoke City Schools, we know each student by name and need. I cannot think of anyone other than Franny Apel who embodies this vision more. Franny has also been a youth basketball coach in Roanoke and a mission-driven leader with the Junior League of Roanoke Valley. Whether she's mentoring on the court or organizing service through the league, she brings integrity, energy, and purpose to every role she takes on. Her reappointment would ensure that Roanoke City Schools continues to benefit from her hands-on leadership, unwavering advocacy, and the ability to bring people together in the service of our schools. She's not just a board member, she's a champion for kids. I'm on the last sentence.
That's fine.
Trusted voice in our com, in our community, and a tireless advocate for quality public education. I wholeheartedly support her continued service on the Roanoke City, City School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, my name is Shannon Schaefer, and I am here to speak, um, in support of Franny Apel to be reappointed to the Roanoke City School Board as well. Um, I have worked alongside Franny in the Junior League of Roanoke Valley for years. Um, in every position, Franny has poured herself into the role. Um, she's fine-tuned the processes and procedures, and worked with the Junior League to make policy changes if needed, but she is always looking to make the position that she's, she serves in better, and the organization that she serves in better. In recent years, Franny served as the president of the Junior League, and she asked me to be her presidential advisor, and I humbly accepted, but I, we would do weekly lunches, and I found that I learned more from her during those lunches than she was learning from me, but I was always dazzled by the thought and, um, that she put into every decision that she was, um, making. She carefully thought about all the options, um, considered feedback prior to making every decision. She, uh, you know, went to painstaking efforts to make sure that it was gonna be the right decision and the decision that most people supported, and I, I truly, like I said, learned more from her during those lunches. We've continued those lunches, um, and I'm still learning from her and her leadership, but dazzled by the care and concern she puts into every decision. And I know she does that as a school board member, and she does that in the Junior League as well. She truly cares about the community that we all live in, um, and she pours her time, knowledge, and care into making it better, as Jessica just described, all of the other things she does besides Junior League and school board, and she's a mom and basketball coach, and often when we do our lunches, she's coming from volunteer tutoring at one of the elementary schools in the city. So she's constantly learning and seeking new information to best educate, educate herself to do right by each board organization entity that she is involved in. I'm confident that Franny would continue to be invested and a valuable member of the school board if she was reappointed, and I wanna reiterate that I recommend and support Franny being reappointed, reappointed to the Roanoke City School Board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Mark Cathy Vaji Hardy.
Thank you all very much for having me, uh, members of City Council, excuse me for the frog in my throat. Uh, I'm here to speak in favor of two reappointments for the Roanoke City School Board, Joyce Watkins and Franny Apel. Joyce is just a huge winner, she's an empathetic leader, she's one of the best people I've known in Roanoke. Uh, she and I served together for five years, and she is all about the kids, she figured out how to serve really quickly. She was first appointed in the fall of 2019, uh, the COVID year, and the year our superintendent retired. So she had the double whammy, and she came out of there like a champ, immediately, you know, led on a lot of features, she single-handedly convinced the board and the administration to have the small individualized graduations we did that year for the class of 2020, which was a really big deal. And we all wanted to hide under our desks and stay away from this, and not, not her, uh, and, and she's been like that on a million different issues. Uh, she has been the vice chair for many years, she could be the chair in a second. She has a very successful career and travels a lot, and is still back for the meetings. I mean, Joyce Watkins is A+ and, and I really hope you reappoint her. Uh, Franny Apel, uh, you've heard a lot of her qualifications from the first two speakers, I overlapped with her for two years. She came to us with a strong background as a teacher, as you heard about, including in Chicago. Uh, she impressed me the most with her detailed note-taking and an intense eye for detail. Uh, she amassed an incredible amount of knowledge in a short time. Uh, she's the most impressive first-year school board member I ever saw, uh, in, just a little bit over Joyce, but not much. Uh, not just her service on the naming committee, which she's well-known for, but she knew the policies, she knew the numbers. She's the vice chair now, uh, I'd venture to guess she's a future chair, and she ought to be, cause she knows this place inside out. The, 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 the depth of her experience, the breadth of her experience, I think is irreplaceable on that board, even after one term, and she has an immense appetite and enthusiasm for hard work. So I'll hope you, hope you reappoint both those nice ladies.
Thank you very much. Who is the next speaker?
Vaji Hardy, Hardy, I don't believe she's here.
Okay.
Pamela Banks?
Thank you so much. It is absolutely my pleasure to be here, Mayor Cobb, um, city council members, um, to Dr. Janet, and as school board members, to community and city leaders and concerned citizens. I'm here to, um, support, um, Franny Mary Apel and Joyce Watkins, um, in their confirmations back to the Roanoke City School Board. I've known Joyce for dozens of years, we have served on PTA boards, our children have played basketball together, and one thing that Joyce recognized was that, at that time, there was not a representative on the Roanoke City School Board representing Northwest Roanoke, a district in which one of the city high schools is located. Not only did she recognize that, she took actions to take care of that issue. I'm so glad that she did. And Joyce has a community connection, she cares about the overall well-being of all children, not just her own, um, as well as making good citizens. It's not just about, um, like Dr. White says, we want our children to graduate with a resume, but we also want them to graduate knowing that they can be productive parts of the Roanoke Valley. That's one of the things that, um, Joyce focuses on. I'd also like to recognize her as a woman of integrity. I have known her on a personal level for years. I've never known her to be anything except a woman of valor, a woman of honor, a Proverbs 31 woman, and I'd just like to say that she's an example for both young women and older women alike. I conclude myself in that. And as far as Mary Franny Apel, I can't say enough about her. I'm with Mr. Cathy. I just think that she has been absolutely wonderful in her passion for education, in raising responsible, respectful children, and also in her great leadership style. She and I served on the naming committee for the school administration building, as well as the ROTAC. There were no, um, there were no dysfunctions within the meeting. She set the agenda, we followed the agenda, we got it done, and we did it well. So I just wanna say that whatever Franny does, that's who she is, and that's who she is as a leader. So I would like to recommend Joyce Watkins and, um, Mary Franny Apel to be reappointed to Roanoke City School Council.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you. Um, good evening, my name is Jessie Kaufman, and I'm a Roanoke City resident. I am also here to sing the praises of Franny Apel. I express my strong and enthusiastic support for the reappointment of Franny Apel to the City of Roanoke School Board. Franny and I have overlapped in many aspects of our volunteer lives. She never ceases to amaze me with her conscientious insights and ability to remember minor-yet-key details. Franny is a dedicated public servant whose passion for education, equity, and community engagement has had a meaningful and lasting impact on cities, schools, and families. Franny brings a unique and powerful blend of leadership experience and firsthand knowledge of the classroom. As a former teacher, she worked directly with students in under-resourced communities, gaining a deep understanding of the, of the challenges and opportunities facing public education. Her experience in the classroom has shaped her perspective on policy and reinforced her commitment to ensuring that every child, regardless of background, has access to a high-quality education. As the PTA President of Highland Park Elementary, I regularly see her dedication to our Highland Park community and hear her praise from teachers. She has worked one-on-one with so many of our students, completing assessments to aid them with their classwork, and regularly volunteers at school events. This is not even one of her assigned schools. Franny brings the same level of commitment to the school she has been assigned to represent by the school board. I think she must have a T-shirt from every school in our district in her wardrobe. In addition to her work in education, Franny has demonstrated outstanding civic leadership as a past president of the Junior League of Roanoke Valley. I am in my president-elect year for the JLRB, and only now am I grasping the intensity of this role. Under her leadership, our organization expanded its impact through strategic partnerships and service initiatives aimed at supporting women, children, and families. Her ability to lead with vision, collaborate across sectors, and mobilize community resources speaks to her effectiveness as a leader and her dedication to service. She continues to be an active, engaged member, and I look to her as a mentor for my own upcoming presidency. On the school board, Franny has been a thoughtful, data-informed, and student-centered fellow. On the school board, Franny has been a thoughtful, data-informed, and student-centered voice. She listens intently, asks the right questions, and consistently advocates for policies that support student achievement, teacher retention, and equity in educational outcomes. As a constituent, I appreciate that Franny listens and considers all voices in her decision-making. Franny Apehl is precisely the kind of leader Roanoke needs, one who is experienced, engaged, and deeply invested in the future of our schools. I urge her reappointment and look forward to the continued positive impact of her service on behalf of our students, educators, and community. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Adelaide Kaufman and Harry Harvey Brookens.
Hi, Ms. Kaufman, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Adelaide Kaufman and I'm an eighth grader at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. I'm also here tonight to advocate for the reappointment of Franny Apehl to the Roanoke City School Board. Over the past few years, I've gotten more familiar with Franny through her friendship with my mom and the overlap between her volunteer work and my life. Franny continues to be an inspiration for me with how apparent it is that she actually cares about the people of Roanoke. This past winter, Franny offered me and one of my good friends the opportunity to be volunteer junior coaches alongside her for an eight U rec girls' basketball team. Throughout the season, she made a point to support us in our own school basketball careers, including even going as far as showing up with her family to our games. Additionally, I always heard her talking about how the next place she's going is a Patrick County or Fleming sports game, which shows she truly and genuinely cares about the events and kids at our schools. Finally, I want to talk about how I aspire to be like Franny in all the ways she gives to our community. I see how she orchestrates fundraisers and drives to help those in need all around us through the Junior League. She's helped at the Children's Hospital, helped with getting supplies for a drive for pregnant women, worked on the startup of a community garden, as well as participated in neighborhood trash pickups, to name just a few. I hope that you take this into consideration because I enthusiastically support her reappointment to the school board. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Brookens.
Greetings, Mayor Cobb, City Council members, City Manager Turner, and Roanoke City staff. My name is Harvey Brookens and some of you might know me from representing the city on the Western Virginia Water Authority, but I'm not here to comment on any of that business tonight. Some of you might know me as being City Executive of National Bank of Blacksburg, who recently opened up the first full-service branch on Franklin Road, where I hope to see you all at our ribbon-cutting on April 29th. But again, I'm not here for any of that business. Even though I've been asked several times to endorse various candidates on various levels, this is the first time I find myself before you, but when somebody who I consider a friend, and I know as selfless, who pours into so many others, asks you to do you a favor, it's hard to say no. I met Joyce Watkins and her husband, Rob, shortly after relocating here. She's an active member of Pilgrim Baptist Church, married for over 25 years, with two adult childrens who are products of Roanoke City Public Schools, one PH and one Fleming. She's not only a wife and mother, but also a healthcare director going on 16 years of Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield, but it doesn't stop there. Her passion and selflessness, as I mentioned before, found herself serving on Roanoke City School Board for the past two terms, and that doesn't speak to all the other volunteer activities she's involved with. I am here to endorse Joyce Watkins for reappointment for the Roanoke City School Board. You won't find someone as passionate, knowledgeable, and who makes herself available to our children, parents, teachers, and administration, and treats everyone with respect and empathy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Richard Lowry. And Connie Steele.
Welcome, Mr. Lowry.
Thank you. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, and Members of City Council. I'm honored to stand before you today to speak about an extraordinary individual and a vital member of our community, Joyce Watkins, as you consider her for another term on the Roanoke City School Board. I have been fortunate to know Joyce for over 13 years, during which she's become an invaluable friend and an unwavering pillar in our community. Her deep roots here are clear, beginning with her active engagement at Pilgrim Baptist Church. Joyce's commitment and faith have always reached far beyond the congregation, touching countless lives throughout our community. Joyce and her husband have enjoyed 25 years of marriage and have raised two remarkable sons who are proud graduates of Roanoke City Public Schools, the same schools that shaped my own education. Her dedication as a parent and community member to education aligns perfectly with our shared values. In her professional life, Joyce has spent 16 years in the Medicare sales at Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield, currently serving as the Director of Sales Strategy and Support. Her career proves her strategic acumen and leadership, coupled with her unwavering commitment to service. Joyce's service on the school board for two impactful terms has been marked by her relentless advocacy for our children's future and commitment to enhancing educational standards. This dedication resonates in her longstanding membership in the NAACP, underscoring her lifetime commitment to civil rights and equality as a civil servant. Moreover, she plays an active role in several civic organizations dedicated to advancing our community, with involvement in one recognized internationally for its global services. So Joyce's participation speaks volumes about her determination to effect positive change not only locally, but also globally. Joyce Watkins exemplifies what it means to be a genuine community leader, selfless, committed, and deeply invested in the welfare of our city and its residents. Her leadership, dedication, and vision have already deeply enriched our school system and community. As you deliberate on her candidacy for another term on the school board, I encourage you to consider the profound and lasting impact she has made. Joyce's continued service will undoubtedly fortify our community's future and inspire us all to strive for excellence and unity. Thank you for considering Joyce Watkins, whose exemplary character and unwavering dedication make her an ideal candidate to continue serving on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First Lady Steele, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here tonight.
Mayor Cobb, City Council members, and all assembled today. My name is Connie B. Steele and I'm here to ask Council to consider Mrs. Joyce Watkins for the reappointment to the Roanoke City School Board. I met Joyce some 16 years ago when she joined Pilgrim Baptist Church. How could you miss the lady with the electric smile, the electrifying smile? As a member of the Congregation of Pilgrim, she immediately became involved with the ministry. She joined the Scholarship Club, which provides means for high school students to receive scholarships for post-high school education. She was instrumental in securing funds to assist students going to college. She is the mother of two sons who are Roanoke City School graduates, and that is commendable. Even more commendable is that she has been married to Robert for 25 years. I am here today, one among many, who can attest to the devotion and committed community service rendered by Ms. Joyce Watkins throughout the Roanoke Valley. She is a lifetime member of NAACP, and as you have heard, she's been employed 16 years with Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and she serves with two not-for-profit community civic organizations, organizations whose scope extends nationally and global. I can truly express to you that Ms. Watkins has a sincere love for the youth and would be a great asset if reappointed to the board. I have watched her devote her time and talent to youth of the inner-city schools. She has been advocating for our youth in various capacities. She is a hard worker and is not afraid of a challenge. As she seeks reappointment to the Roanoke City School Board, I am confident she will continue to serve with great commitment. I can truly say she loves what she does. I believe it's not for popularity or fame, but she attributes her worth with the old familiar song, "If I can help somebody as I pass along, then my living will not be in vain." As I conclude, I am honored for this opportunity to present Mrs. Joyce Watkins for the reappointment to the Roanoke City School Board. Thank you so much.
That's it? All right. Let me ask, that's all of the speakers we had signed up to speak. Is there anybody else here in the room that signed up to speak on this particular public hearing that we've missed? Okay. Well, thank you all for those very engaging remarks. The appointment of the two school board trustees will be made most likely at our May 5th meeting, so stay tuned. All right. Next, we are going to move on to Item 3, which is the public hearing to receive the views of citizens with regard to the recommended fiscal year 2526 City of Roanoke budget. Okay? So this is a good transition time. If anybody needs to slip out, we'll pause and let you do that. And if any folks that are currently along the wall, if you'd like to come and find Thank you all for being adaptable and patient. Okay, again, in case anyone new has come into the space, each speaker will have three minutes. We'll call you up two by two. Just come to the podium. You'll see a box to your right that has a green, a yellow, and a red light. When it reaches yellow, that means you've got about 30 seconds left. If you're about to wrap up when it hits red, I'll work with you to finish up. And I'm going to open the public hearing and, Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to invite our first two speakers.
All right. Kenneth Wright, Sylvia King.
Mr. Wright, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, good evening. First time coming up to speak in front of City Council.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about funding for rec clubs. I was happy to see that the Wayne Fleming Girls Basketball Team was up here because I bet you maybe one, or maybe all of them, played rec club. We need more funds in the rec club. Personally, I've been part of rec club since I was four years old. I'm 35 years old. I've been playing ball here in Roanoke City all my life, coached since I was 14. I love what I do, love giving back to the community, and the funding we need is for any kind of sports equipment, from cleats to gloves to hats to soccer equipment, soccer cleats, football equipment, anything, just anything we can have the city donate. We also need grants and scholarships for families, single-income families. They need to have this to play. This year, Roanoke City Little League is charging parents $75 to play sports, and that's from T-ball all the way up, and that's ridiculous. I'm sorry. As a former player in these rec clubs, I know my parents didn't pay $75 for me to play. I'm sorry. That's ridiculous. Like I said, and the other thing is, is that we also need to give information out to the community, and I know you do a great job giving it to the school, Roanoke City Schools, because I work for Roanoke City Schools. I deliver that information. And part of delivering the information is, is I see it's for English-speaking and Spanish-speaking. Well, we have one other demographic in Roanoke City Schools, Haitian Creole-speaking students. We do not have that information to give to them. We need to change the website of roankity.gov as well to get this information out. We got to inform the parents because I don't want any kid left behind. And that's what the school system taught me when I was there, was no child left behind. Well, we're leaving the kids behind right now in the rec clubs. That's how we produce what we have in high school. City of Salem has on a water towel right now that says Salem, City of Champions. Well, I'm sorry, I want that here. I was born and raised there, like I said, and thank you for your time. I hope, I look forward to seeing y'all come out to the rec clubs. I'm at Wimson Road Rec Club right now, T-ball coach. Please come see the games. I'd love to have y'all out there, see how they play, okay? Y'all have a good night. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Well done. Welcome, Ms. King.
Good evening, Mayor Cobb, and in the absence of Vice Mayor Maguire and all the City Council and City Manager and co-City Manager. It's a pleasure to be in here one more time. I'm representing two advocate groups, organization. The first one is BRAGS, Matt Trump. We had a tour on one of our board members. She did a tour on the city with bus signs, and we realized that a lot of bus signs are faded, you cannot read it. So therefore, if we have new people catching a bus, they don't know where to catch the bus or the signs is, and therefore, some bus draw is made bypassable, you know? It's all kind of scenario. But what I'm here to ask of the City Council and City Manager is that, in order to change and get those bus signs visible and you can read it, we need fund day. And I know funding has been frozen in a lot of ways in this new administration, but as y'all been doing the budget for the metro transportation, we believe that you all got some money for us. So therefore, that's what I'm here to ask for, finance, okay? And also too, I'm gonna slip this in, Walmart over at Valley View, we need a shelter over there. We've been talking about this and emphasizing it for years and years and years, and this past summer, winter, it has been tremendous cold rain, sleeting snow, wind. We've been out there waiting on the bus and not having any shelter or anything. So that might be a separate issue, but that needs to be a concern and we need to react. And if you've got money and finance for that, that's a good one. The third, the second organization, and I appreciate you because I know y'all can get it done. The second one is Spencer Washington Park. Thank you so much for y'all, y'all's support, and we thank you for the pools it's coming. People are excited about it. We have three different, 300 community surveys saying how they're excited about it for the children. We have an upcoming event and announcement that Washington Park is going to celebrate their 102nd anniversary during the 4th of July, and we are, Washington Park is, we're going to do a celebration on the 5th. So that's going to be a lot of celebration for July the 4th and the 5th. We planning on having a band, we planning on having, doing all kind of activities to bring all attention to Washington Park 2025 to celebrate 120 years. Thank you for your time, appreciate y'all.
Trish White Boyd and William Frayland.
Welcome, Ms. White Boyd.
Thank you so much, Mayor Cobb, Members of Council, City Manager, Ms. Turner, Madam Clerk. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I am here, well, first of all, let me just say thank you. Thank you so much for everything that you all do. I know it's not easy, it's a very difficult job, and I want you to know that I appreciate you guys. But I am here respectfully to ask that the proposed budget be passed with as few changes and amendments as possible, particularly with regard to the inclusion of the Mills Tax. The city manager and the budget committee have done an outstanding job crafting a balanced budget that serves our city's needs very, very effectively. I'm amazed that they were able to get it done under the current circumstances. Also, I will say that the city has demonstrated their commitment to achieving excellence within our schools, a goal that has required sacrifices such as adjustments in employee compensation, deferred maintenance, and postponement of capital improvement projects. And this is just to name a few. And that you know, I've only been gone several months, so I know exactly what we have gone through in order to make things better for our city schools. But thankfully, the current budget addresses many of these issues. So you guys know that the city funded schools at the current level to facilitate improving their performance, sacrificing the city government's ability to fully address our own needs. Given the current RCPS fund balance, level funding schools should not significantly impact as the fund balance can be used to bridge that gap. We are all aware of the really challenging times that we face, often necessitating difficult decision, as Ms. Turner absolutely puts it on occasion, challenges and choices. While we have consistently maintained a balanced budget, the practice of reallocating funds, as that old adage goes, Robin Peter to pay Paul, well, that is unsustainable. In the long term, it's just not going to work, and that is unfortunately what has happened. So this is a pivotal moment for us to address some of these issues holistically and not to take an approach, please don't take an approach that's untenable. I just have one thing to say, and that's thank you again for your dedication and service to the community, and I am confident, I am really confident that you all will continue your leadership and will guide us in the right direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Frayland, I'm going to pause for just a second.
If you could.
Thank you. If I could ask everyone in rows where there are empty seats, if you could move to the center and free up those seats on the end. We can't have more than 23 people standing in the back, and we need to let some other people come in from the EOC room. So that would be very helpful to us. And believe it or not, we are still working to get a center aisle in this room eventually, which will help movement go a lot better. All right. Thank you all very much. Mr. Frayland, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam Manager. It's nice to be here. I want to talk to you all on behalf of the Valley Outdoor Infrastructure Committee. We're a relatively new organization to advocate for outdoor infrastructure. I have colleagues here, I've got Shannon Dominguez in the back, okay? And I've got Sean Baco right there. And we've got about 1,200 people on our mailing list already. We're just sort of getting started. We had a kickoff in August. The premise of this organization is that we have world-class immovable assets in the Roanoke Valley that can give us a competitive advantage in the marketplace for labor, in the marketplace for quality of living, and that we need to exploit those resources by investing in them. I want to say at the start, I'm not unaware that this is a tight budget year and that we're a new organization. We have a goal to try to get the outdoor infrastructure and parks and rec funding up to 6% of the budget. I think it's currently about 2%. That is probably not going to be attainable this year, I understand. But this is more of an introduction about what we're going to try to do as you all plan into the future, and hopefully we have better financial times to come. We've decided to work on two issues, three issues, the first being the just raw budget, and that's not just Roanoke City, that's Roanoke County and Salem as well. The first issue we want to do is we want to finish the Roanoke River Greenway. That greenway was started over 30 years ago, and it's about time we finished it. Now, to you all's credit, in Roanoke City, you're just about done, if not done, and I thank you for that. We've got some work to do at the other end, and we're going to diligently pursue that over the years. The other is to reopen the Roanoke Mountain Campsite. That is in y'all's bailiwick. And we can get into some details about that lease and how we can do some things, but that's a long-range goal that we have as well. So again, we've got the movable assets, a competitive advantage that we need to take advantage of. And I hope we start planning that way as we move forward. I appreciate your time, and this is the first time in my political career I've left time on the clock.
Thank you, Mr. Frayland.
Elizabeth C.S. Jameson and Laura Hartman.
Welcome, Dr. Jameson.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Cobb and City Manager Turner and members of council. I appreciate your time this evening, and thank you first and foremost for celebrating our students this evening. It is certainly why we on the other side get up every day, and it was lovely to see tonight. So that's not counting against my time. You are going to beat me, but I'll wrap it up quick when I'm done. So as chair, I am here as the Chair of the Roanoke City School Board of Trustees. In my eight years as trustee, this is the first time I've ever come to this body when I wasn't being interviewed for this position. I hope I don't break this tradition lightly. I hope you'll understand the seriousness that why I'm here. My title is trustee because we are entrusted by council, by you, to help govern a system to serve our entire city, because cities can only be as strong as their schools. These are not the school board schools, these are Roanoke schools. Their success or failure is under council's umbrella through the trust that you place in us. But that trust feels tenuous. Since our last joint meeting, we have spoken one-on-one, but I have since been brought to my attention that without notice to your school board partners or to the public, you've been considering a vote to fully remove the city's rainy day fund. If this is true, I'm here tonight to ask you reconsider. Tomorrow, the superintendent plans to propose a one-year use of the rainy day fund to close the $6.9 million shortfall being you that this budget will create for us. We understand that the situation is dire. That's why the fund exists, because right now Roanoke is having a rainy day. This plan is to buy us all time, so hopefully over the next year, in conversation, we can figure out a sustainable solution that benefits all of us. We know the challenges are real. But if you sweep the school's fund balance, Roanoke schools will have layoffs. We will have larger class sizes. We will not have the funds to finish Preston Park Elementary School. The city will now have to cover, the city will have to cover the school's bank balance variance, which annually sways from about $8 million to $17 million. And we will be back in this public conversation this time next year, a situation the council and school board have not been in in over 15 years. I ask you, please, consider this fiscal tool that benefits both of us, keep it. The budget season's theme has been challenges and choices, and so let me share a past challenge. And I'm going to do it quick because I'm running out of time. During 2009, during the global recession, the schools had a $16 million shortfall all of a sudden because tax revenues plummeted, and it required, would have required massive layoffs and closures. And we turned to council, and together, we worked together to restructure things to prevent layoffs. We built the rainy day fund. The council then, from that, made the choice to build a rainy day fund, and they created Eat for Education campaign. In 2013, Councilman Rosen wrote in the Roanoke Times that RCPS, quote, wisely put away many millions of dollars, and said that with the new funding formula, it was, quote, "a clear sign that education is our top priority." Yet this year, the school funding didn't even make the slide with your top priorities. That brings me today. I'm here to ask you, give us time. We want to work with you. We want to do the job you have appointed us to do. Nationally, we've become a place where we cut first and ask questions later. Please ask the questions first. This crisis did not happen yesterday, and it cannot be solved on the backs of our children. Don't let today's challenges steal our students' choices for tomorrow. Thank you for all you do. I know how hard you work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Hartman, welcome.
Good evening. I bring you greetings from the Bus Riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group. There's a handful of us who'll be speaking with you tonight. You've already heard from Sylvia King. We've got a few more coming. In fact, can we take a minute? Anyone here is in support of BRAG? Can we get a little bit of a wave and a clap? We've got some people. All right. Because we also are concerned about the things that really matter to public transit in this valley. So as you can see from the paper that's being passed around, we are asking that you please fund Valley Metro fully. If you're tempted to cut something, please don't cut the buses. We really need them. In fact, we need our transit to be even better than it is. So anything that you all can do to support that would not only benefit the current bus riders, but would attract more riders and would lift up the entire city. As we like to say, a great city deserves great transit, and we appreciate what we have, but we think we're not there yet. We also are requesting specifically a line item in the budget for bus stop improvements, so that every year, that's on people's radar screens, so that every year we know that we can make those steps forward towards improving our bus stops. I also am distributing to you all an academic paper that I wrote with a couple of my students a couple of years ago to help you see the research. There's research behind this, which shows that improving transit improves everything. It improves health, it improves the economy, it improves the environment, it improves safety, it improves youth experiences, it improves educational opportunities. There are so many things that rest upon the ability to get around. And so we really want to encourage you to fully support our ability to get around using not just cars, because sometimes cars don't cut it, sometimes you need something else. And buses should be a really good backup option for everyone. So we're asking you to please prioritize that in your budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Willis. Kathleen Woolley. Woolley.
Welcome, Mr. Willis.
Good evening, Mayor Cobb, council members, Madam Turner. I was trustee of the city school board about 10 years, 15 years ago, from roughly 2010 to June 2021. And I'm going to speak to you tonight about my hope that you will keep the surplus fund as it is. And to go through that, I'm wondering, since it's been a while, and since I was there during the beginning of it and the middle of it, I can give you a sense of the value of what that fund has been for our school board system. There were two things that helps us be flexible and stable at the same time as a school board. One is the 40% true-up of surplus funds that we were counting on every year. And the second was this surplus fund that controls, that creates and manages the surplus. The 30% true-up has been discontinued. I understand that. But I am here tonight to remind you of the crucial value of keeping the management of the undesigned funds at their current levels. One, our cash flow is difficult to predict, and over the past 15 years, the amount that we've had to pay out before getting reimbursed to some of our other vendors and partners has been as much as $20 million. Without the surplus fund, we would be overdrafting on our bank account. So we, at the time, the school board put in a policy to make sure that we didn't go below a certain number, and that's an important number to keep in mind. Second, we actually faced several challenges that were unforeseen, things like sequestration, things like teacher shortages, things like salary schedules, and trying to make sure that we could retain our teachers. Program funding stops and starts from the state and the federal levels. Bond market variations, COVID-related shrinkage, and I'm sure you guys have been through many of those with us in the time since I left the school board. But in all of these unexpected and highly variable events, we were counting on three things. If we didn't have a full creativity and professional and conscious staff on both the board side and the council side, we wouldn't have had any options. Two, if we didn't have the goodwill and cooperation and partnership of council to build it up and then draw it down in a responsible way, we wouldn't have been able to survive. But mostly, it was because the amount that we had planned on and budgeted and kept in there in these rainy day emergencies. I understand that the presentation of the superintendent tomorrow will include money to help offset some of the rainy day that we're experiencing, but I would encourage you to leave the rest of it in there as designed. There's a lot that we don't know that's going to happen. We need that flexibility. If we had been through all those things without the surplus fund, we would have had to cut programs, we would have had to cut salaries, we would have had to cut materials. And we would have been unable to sustain our growth and our progress and the confidence in our system. So I want to remind you of the fact that the fund waxed and waned to benefit our teachers and our children and our families. It gives us room. It gives us time. It gives us time to breathe and look around and look for better ways together. And our city is better for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Kate Woolley, and I am the Vice President of the Bus Riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group. I am here to present to you the results of our yearly contest, the Sarriest Bus Stop Award, which just completed recently. During the Sarriest Bus Stop Bracket, which we have themed to be like March Madness, we have people from the communities that you oversee submit what they believe to be the Sarriest Bus Stop. Sometimes this is based on infrastructure, sometimes it's based on degradation, sometimes it is just the bus stop that frustrates them most in their day-to-day life. Our winner this year was Orange Eastbound at Moira. So give a hand for the Sarriest Bus Stop. Thank you. We do this contest every year because it provides the bus riders that we represent an outlet for their frustrations with the infrastructure that they have to use every day. We have passed around a paper that is asking for a line item dedicated to bus stop maintenance. We like to think that we are not asking you for something new, we're asking you to invest in the infrastructure you already have. As Sylvia earlier said, some of our signs are faded. As you can see on our poster here, some of these bus stops have only a sign. They have no shelter, they have no bench, they have no landing pad for people to sit on. If you would consider improving even one of these, you would be directly impacting the lives of your constituents, people who need to use your bus system to work, and people who are sometimes forced to do it in conditions that are undignified or at times unsafe. I want you to imagine going to work here at city council without using your car. I want you to imagine waking up at 6:30 in the morning so you can get out to your bus stop by 7:40 and having to wait on a grassy margin on the side of the road while cars whiz past you. Some people are careful, some people aren't. And some people have to risk the chance of getting hit every single day they try to go to work. Funding transit directly funds people who live in your city, who shop in your city, and who work for your city. Cutting transit would mean cutting the access that they need to be productive members of Roanoke City. This is why we have asked for an ongoing commitment in the form of a line item budget that you are willing to invest in these people, in our transit system, and in their right to benefit their community as a whole. and in their right to benefit their community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Grammer. Brandy Hampton.
Well, as Mr. Grammer is coming forward, I want to congratulate him on being the first ever rider on our brand-new electric buses. Maybe, do you want to hold that mic over closer to his speaking device? That will help.
My name is Steve Grammer. My name is Steve Grammer. I live at 1817 Westview Avenue. I am here to talk about why it is important to continue to appropriately find Metro Flex as you prepare next year's budget. Metro Flex is a great service. One of the primary benefits is being able to schedule same-day service. Offering same-day service is a huge improvement to our city's transit system. Let me give you one personal example. Prior to Metro Flex, I woke up sick one morning and needed to go to urgent care. My caregiver had to find another transit service immediately, which cost me $90 out of pocket. This was more than just an inconvenience, because it also had a big financial impact on me. I live on a very limited budget, as do a lot of people who do not have direct access to transportation. When people in our community do not have immediate access to medical care, our health suffers, which adds up to a less healthy population around the whole region. Although same-day service is not fully guaranteed due to rider capacity, the demand for this service must be factored into the budgeting process in order to meet the growth trends of today as well as the future. Additionally, extending the service hours was a huge step in the right direction. By offering later hours and Sunday service allows your constituents to work the hours and shifts to meet their job requirements, attend evening events within the city, and allowing greater access to worship gatherings, just to name a few of the positive impacts. In other words, it offers your constituents choices that were not available before Metro Flex. All this to say, continuing with Metro Flex will help give people within the disability community and people without direct access to transportation a life like yours. Thank you for taking this into careful consideration as you plan for and prepare next year's budget. Let's continue moving forward to make Roanoke's transit system a bright, shining star of the star city.
Brandy Hampton. Okay, Mr. Kathy. Mark Kathy.
Welcome back.
Thank you for having me back. I didn't know I could do it twice in one night, but I signed up twice and they let me do it. Dick and Eli really covered the ground that I wanted to cover. But I was on the school board for nine years. Dick was on the school board for 10 years, which I think is an all-time record. He came on to do somebody else's term, and then he was reappointed three times. He really knows what he's talking about. While I was on the school board, I subscribed to all the emails, I read all the journals, I read all the articles. When I started on the school board in 2015, the thinking was, we'd hit the demographic peak sometime in the mid-2010s. Numbers of students were going down, that schools were going to be closing. And this, you know, Dr. Bishop closed several schools that needed to be closed. It was very, it was very tough. It was very hard to do. And nobody thought, and there were lots, all these empty rooms at Fleming and all these empty rooms at Patrick Henry. And nobody thought we'd ever need them again. Nobody thought, because you just don't know what's going to happen in 10 years. Not one of you guys were on the school, were on the city council when I got appointed. And that's only 10 years ago. That's not really very long ago. And we're at a point now in the history of this country where we're not sure what's going to happen. The federal government, you know, is hitting Ctrl+F for the word diversity and cutting money for anything that says it. They're actually literally doing that. And we don't know where we're going to be next year. This is as bad financially, you know, fiscally as COVID was. And we're doing it to ourselves voluntarily, apparently. But anyway, I kind of try to keep an eye on things and feel the pulsings of the world. And I'm hearing things about flat school spending and the 40% agreement, which we got into last year and we got started on, and the fund balance. And I'm telling you, I just don't want us to do anything drastic yet. Not now. Now's not the time. We don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what's around the corner. We don't know that the president's going to wake up tomorrow and fire the chairman of the Federal Reserve, which he doesn't even have power to do. But I don't know anybody who'll stop him. And at any rate, this is not the time to take drastic action. This school system is growing. Why is it growing? I'm not exactly sure. But one thing I found is people move here from all over the place to get our special education services. They are amazing. People move here from miles away. People move, people come to Roanoke, so maybe their kids will go to golf school. People come to Roanoke City for a lot of reasons. Anyway, Roanoke City is still a booming place that is doing well. And I think that, and I want you just, you know, for the reasons that Dick and Eli expressed, be careful and think about, think about two years ahead, think about three years ahead, think about 10 years ahead when none of us will be here. But boy, you know, maybe Mr. Nash, he's young enough, but most of us are not going to be here. And think about what you're doing for the future. Leave the fund balance alone and keep an eye on the funding, because this system is vibrant and it's successful, and people still want to come here, and it's growing when it's not supposed to be growing. And that's a good thing. Thank you.
Rebecca Murphy. Amanda Cooley.
Welcome.
Hello. Hello, council members. My name is Rebecca Murphy. I am a mother of a student at Roanoke City Public Schools. I'm speaking today, once again, to encourage you to abide by the school board's request to leave the education budget as it is. By forcing Roanoke City Schools to operate on a level-funded budget, this will result in deep cuts to our schools, cuts that our schools cannot afford. Roanoke City Public Schools currently have a student population where 61% of the children are economically disadvantaged and 335 are experiencing homelessness. Teachers are literally a lifeline for some of these children. The high schools are also already severely overcrowded. Cutting funding will most definitely lead to reduced graduation rates and lower-rated schools. I'm a hairstylist, and many of my clientele are upper-middle-class professionals who relocated here for work. I always ask what made them choose Roanoke. And the top three reasons are the outdoor activities, cost of living, and these schools. The city needs to protect the asset. They have an RCPS if it wants to continue to grow. I have been curious as to how the city chooses which areas to cut funding or tax more, such as the meals tax. According to the information given at the budget meeting last week, the majority of the tax revenue that will come from the additional meals taxes for overtime pay. Overtime pay for who? Why should small businesses and taxpayers be on the hook for what appears to be mismanagement? On the topic of mismanagement, it has been well-publicized that there have been issues in the city council. At this time a year ago, people were resigning right and left in the city manager's office. So why is it that there hasn't been an audit published in two years? When I emailed you all, I got exactly one response from Mr. Hagan. Thank you. He said there was a delay because of the mismanagement last year. How do you propose to fix problems before the problems have been diagnosed? Revenue was up last year, so where did it go? Lastly, with all of that, I think it should be known that you, the city council, have decided to double your salary over the next two years while cutting funding to schools, increasing taxes on our local restaurants, and failing to publish an audit in years. You are asking our children's schools to sacrifice and our restaurants to bear additional burdens while you enjoy quite the pay raise. If you want to change the trajectory of Roanoke City's financial future, look from within and find out where you're going wrong. Earn that raise, and don't expect our children or our local small businesses to flip the bill for it. Thank you for your time.
Welcome, Ms. Cooley.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Amanda Cooley, and I am a resident of Roanoke City, along with my husband and children. I am here tonight to talk about the potential budget cuts that would negatively affect Roanoke City Public Schools if implemented. My husband and I have three children, and our oldest daughter attended RCPS from pre-K through high school graduation. I'd like to tell you a little bit about her educational experience. She received an education that was rich, well-rounded, and fully funded. She and her peers were not only offered core subjects, but funding was also provided for programs such as tag, elementary Spanish and strings, art and STEAM classes, engaging in educational field trips, and emerging summer school programs. Her class sizes were reasonable, her school buildings were properly maintained, and staff was always readily available to assist when needed. We are very grateful for the balanced education that she received while she was, and while she was very academically driven. It was all the extras that made her spirit come alive and keep her grounded. Now that she is finishing up her sophomore at Virginia Tech as an aerospace engineering major, an outcome that might not have been possible if her access to a diverse and adequate education were limited due to a bunch of cuts. Now I'd like to talk about our two younger children. Both attend Roanoke City Public Schools, one in middle and one in elementary, and they have also been given many wonderful opportunities in their education. They, in addition, they both have special needs and utilize programs such as special education, speech and occupational therapies, access to small group learning, and additional classroom accommodations. These programs require additional staffing, space, funding, and support from our entire city to continue to be successful. Having schools that are fully staffed for all populations, class sizes that are reasonable, schools that are well-maintained, programs that expand special skills and promote diversity and learning are non-negotiables. Helping our children become well-rounded, kind, self-sufficient, and successful citizens in our community should be a top priority. Our expectation as residents and of, and as parents in Roanoke City is that all schools continue to have access to the same wonderful opportunities and educational experiences without any cuts. Over the last 15 years, I've watched how beneficial investments in our youth can be for the entire community, and I promise you, every child is worth it. Please consider the proposed, please reconsider the proposed budget cuts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Bale. Jordan Bale.
Welcome, Mr. Bale.
Good evening, Mayor Cobb, members of city council, city manager, madam clerk. Madam clerk, my three-year-old niece would not allow my brother to stay, so he will not be speaking.
All right.
I wanted to come and speak about the proposed RCPS budget. There's a famous quote that says, "Education is the passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today." What does Roanoke City want tomorrow to look like? I work, I have the honor of being a son of a former Roanoke City School educator, Carlton Bale. He was principal at Hurt Park and then worked at William Fleming High School. I have the privilege of working at Lucy Addison High School and Fairview Elementary School with many of our Roanoke City School students. And I also have the great honor of working at Apple Ridge Farm, where we serve 150 families each summer. And all of these families are Roanoke City School students. Every single day that I go into Roanoke City Schools or work with a Roanoke City School student, I understand and see the impact that not only their teachers and administrators have on them, but that the support staff that are also in the classroom have on them. It is oftentimes that my sister, who's a sixth-grade history teacher at Lucy Addison, with over 20 children in her classroom, under the great leadership of Dr. Jonathan Ralser, the support staff that is at Lucy Addison Middle School right now are able to work with students one-on-one or in small groups and being able to pull them out. If the money that was supposed to be allocated, I hope I'm using the right verbiage, to Roanoke City Schools is not given, many of those positions are at jeopardy to be eliminated. And I am standing in front of you today as a proud Roanoke City School graduate. And if it had not been for the teachers, educators, mentors, support staff, and coaches that funds allowed for Roanoke City Schools to hire, I would not be standing in front of you today. And so as Dr. Jamison said, the rainy day funds that are extremely needed and vital to the success of our Roanoke City School students is desperately needed so that the continued education of our city schools can continue so that we have a brighter future for tomorrow. So again, I commend Roanoke City Council, city manager, and your staff for all that you have done so far. But it is extremely important and very important that we work together as a community, that we make sure that the most important people in our city, who are youth, are taken care of in the proper way. And part of that is by properly funding their education. Thank you.
Rebecca Carpio. Kathleen Jennings.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Becky Carpio, and I have two sons in Roanoke City Schools. In pre-K and second grade, they're on the back. I don't usually bring them, but. I'm also a member of Crystal Spring Elementary's PTA and a research assistant at the Frayland Biomedical Research Institute. My kids don't always like school. Sometimes just getting to school is hard, and a lot of times, they do have good days. But sometimes they have bad days. And for both of my kids, the help of the class aides has made their experience with schools not only more enjoyable, but more successful. When a child needs extra support academically or emotionally, a school aide can help. When a child is ahead of the class, an aide can teach them a little extra. I'm here tonight for so many reasons that other people have said also. But a big one for us, for my family, are the aides that work with my kids every day. I think our children deserve this ally in the classroom, and decreasing funding would directly impact my children. I'm only just beginning how to be an advocate at events like this one. I don't completely understand every detail that's discussed. But we are anticipating decreased federal funding. And my understanding is that this has impacted indirectly programs such as the RCPS Plus program, which was my son's favorite summer program the last two years. Our family additionally utilizes so many programs, including speech therapy, occupational therapy, guidance counselors, special education services. And I'm concerned that even this funding eventually could be affected. So I'm learning how to become an advocate for my kids. Decreased funding also means more crowded classes and less supported students. With less supported students, we'll see lower scores across the board, and the kids will not have the access to the phenomenal instruction that our teachers and staff provide. When my husband and I decided to move to Roanoke 10 years ago, we researched school ratings. I'm sure that other families moving to the area do the same thing, and I expect that there are many families interested in positions with both Corillian and Virginia Tech in the upcoming years. And if school ratings drop too far, I bet that they will consider moving somewhere else, a different state, a different city, for the future of their children. We need to be more passionate about our students, about our schools. We need to embrace how important our kids are for the future of our city. If our children are not If our children are not supported, if our children are supported, if they are given the resources needed to become successful adults, then we have succeeded. In the last ten seconds, I would like to give a shout-out to the amazing teachers that work with my kids just this year. Ms. Vats, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Murray, Ms. Smith, Ms. Murtaugh, Ms. Dalton, Ms. Goldberg, Ms. Wood, Ms. Harris, and Ms. Haynes. Thank you for your time.
Welcome, Ms. Jennings.
Hi. Just a second, I lost my page in my composition notebook. Hi, my name is Kathleen Jennings and I'm an RCC PTA Board Member, Roanoke City Public Schools employee, alumni, and a parent. There's a direct correlation between student achievement and school funding. Statistics show that when schools are properly funded, student achievement improves. More funding ensures access to qualified teachers, stable learning environments, and other support services. However, in underfunded schools, the students, our youngest Roanoke citizens, must deal with large class sizes, fewer advanced classes, lack of resources, less experienced teachers, and in some cases, no teacher at all. Roanoke City Public Schools students, parents, and employees make up thirty-three percent of Roanoke's roughly ninety-eight thousand, um, citizens. The 2023 to 2024 education funding provided by Roanoke City citizens and taxpayers to Roanoke City Public Schools was thirty-five, thirty-three point five percent of revenue. Roanoke County School students enjoy a forty-two point nine percent rate of fiscal support to their school system, and that percentage will likely increase this year. Um, Roanoke County Schools has roughly the same amount of students as Roanoke City, um, but Roanoke, the Roanoke City student body presents with greater needs regarding, um, requiring direct support and intervention. These needs include chronic absenteeism, economic disadvantages, and a higher rate of English language learners and students experiencing homelessness. Why is education, why is investment in education such a hardship for Roanoke City when other localities are able to support their students at a higher percentage of local tax revenue? On the proposed budget slide present, slide, the proposed budget for Roanoke City slide presentation, the unfunded priorities are listed as social services, one point four million, technology and contracts, a hundred and sixty-six thousand, overtime increase, one point six million, and temporary wage increase, one point five million. The following slide states that all of these priorities, except the one point four million funding request for social services, will be funded by the proposed meal tax. Why is the six point seven million unfunded for Roanoke City Schools not on this list? Are the schools whose stakeholders make up thirty-three percent of Roanoke's population not on the city's list of priorities? I have read through the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 budget several times, and mentioned repeatedly our departmental increases in overtime or rightsizing overtime. Is the budget for salary and benefits for vacant positions not sufficient to cover the overtime needed until the position is filled? I did not see the budget for many departments decreasing, especially not at the nearly seven million deficit asks of Roanoke City Public Schools. Rather, nearly every department had its variance increased. If city council chooses to underfund Roanoke City Schools instead of evaluating whether other city budgeting and spending requires adjustment, they will deprive our youngest citizens of vital support in a changing world and inevitably build barriers, whether intentional or not, to future success. Thank you.
Marta Delarisa? She's not here, okay.
She's not here?
No.
Okay. All right, those are all of the speakers that signed up to speak, that we had signed up for the budget public hearing. Is there anyone else here that wanted to speak to this that wasn't able to sign up? Okay, and this is for the budget specifically, okay? So sir, if you'll come up and just tell us your name, that would be great.
Thank you. My name is Fred Najum. I own Roanoke Fruit and Produce Company, and we service Roanoke City Public Schools. And I, I hear a lot about the funding and everything, and I just would like to inject something if it's been looked at, that the Roanoke City School Food Service has outsourced, uh, there's a third party that we have to deal with, and it seems that there's, uh, a double management system we have to go through. We have to speak to the third party, then we have to deal with the Roanoke City employees who still work for the Roanoke City Schools. And I was just, would like to interject that maybe that should be looked at as saving money instead of spending money on using a third party. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if you could please state your name.
Hi, my name is Ton Le Wen Bean, and I'm here again. Good evening and thank you for letting me speak. Um, I am a parent of, uh, a Crystal Elementary School student and, um, uh, two children at James Madison Middle School. My husband is an educator for Roanoke City Schools for almost twenty years. Um, I graduated from Roanoke City Schools as well, so we're a Roanoke City family. And, um, I'm here because I'm concerned about the budget, the school budget. Um, many people have already stated their concerns that I wanted to state, so I won't go through, uh, all of that information about our students and how much they need it. More than sixty percent of our students economically discha, or disadvantaged, and all of those stats we, uh, but I do want to say that, um, we also continue to hear about, um, RCPS's fund balance. So let's be clear, this is not a surplus sitting idle. This is a critical, this is critical money used to manage cash flow, meet federal grant requirements, and provide stability as pandemic-era funds end. And we still don't have a full picture of, um, city finances to compare. Virginia Code requires that the city's audit to be completed by December thirty-first. As of today, we're approaching the, the edge, or the end of April, and the city's annual final report, financial report is not finished and/or not available to the public. On April tenth, the fin, the finance director said it was almost done. When asked about the normal timeline, she said that the goal is usually December fifteenth. It was noted by, um, our city manager that the delay is due to personnel turnover, and that may be understandable, but it also highlights how little transparency we have right now. And yet, you're cut, you're still putting cuts to schools on the table. RCPS faces increasing needs without guarantees of outside funding, especially with the threat of federal education, as mentioned, um, federal education cuts. And at the end of the day, budget our statement of values. If we say education is a priority, that should be reflected in our investments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public hearing, uh, to receive use of citizens regard, with regard to the recommended city of Roanoke budget. Um, so I will close the public hearing, and again, I want to thank everyone who came out to speak, um, in relation to the budget. We, we do appreciate your input. We're going to take a five-minute recess, uh, to stretch. Um, if anyone needs to use the bathroom, please do so. We will reconvene at eight fifty-five.